I'm Nina Handchut with the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. And I want to welcome you to the 2022 Cloverdale City Council Candidate Forum. We traditionally have, the chambers done this so that our businesses and our residents can meet and get to know the candidates and provide a vehicle for having them answer questions relevant to what's going on in our city. So I, without further ado, I wanted to, first of all, say that candidates, that each of the candidates is going to answer the same question. And remember that this, the job of city council is probably one of the most difficult jobs that there is. And I know there are some of you in here that have been in that position, and I think you'll agree. It's time consuming, it's critically important, though. So, thank you for throwing your hats in the ring, candidates. And, I also wanted to introduce, I introduced myself, but Ron Pavelka is the moderator. He's also on our chamber board. Ron, raise your hand for those of you that don't know him. And then Nick Pavelka is the videographer. His company, Irrelevant Media, is going to be videoing this forum, and then it'll be uploaded probably tomorrow on the city's YouTube site, for those people that weren't able to make it in person. So, thanks, Nick. And wanted to also thank the American Legion Post 293 in Cloverdale. Bob Cox, where are you? They provided this facility, the PA system, and we're very appreciative. And the chairs, and, yeah. Thank you. The county's gonna mail out ballots starting on Monday. So, once you get the ballot and you've filled it out, you can drop them off at, in the box outside, it's a secure box, or you can vote in person. There's lots of different ways to do it this year. So, we try to make it easy and accessible for everybody. And then today, the League of Women Voters reached out to me and said that they would be willing to do a Zoom if enough people are interested, explaining all the different sides of the propositions, the state propositions, which are fairly confusing. You don't know whether you're voting for or against, or whatever. So, if you're interested, please let me know by the end of this week, because they have volunteers that they will put that together, but they've got to have people to be in the audience. It's via Zoom. So, let me know about that. And restrooms, they're off of the lobby, and I don't think there's anything else logistically that we need. So, Ron? Oh, I'm the timekeeper, so I, I have the power. So, each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the question. At one minute, they'll get a yellow sign saying, "You have 30 seconds more to complete your answer." And then finally, when your time is done, and if you're not through, you'll get a red stop sign. Okay? So, if you see me in the front doing that, that's what I'm doing. If you have a question, you can fill out these index cards that are out in the front, and Janess, who's in the back, will, could just raise it up, she'll come pick it, right? Yeah. Everybody knows Janess. Thank you. Thanks very much. We appreciate you being here, we appreciate your participation, and your interest in what's going on in Cloverdale.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, we're gonna get started here in just a minute. We do have a pretty aggressive schedule, we have 134 questions. That's it. Just a, actually, we have about, we have 13 questions. A few questions were submitted earlier, we have taken questions from the audience. There was a few duplications, so we've kind of done a little editing, and I think you'll have, you'll get a pretty good idea of what the, what the candidate's feelings are and beliefs are in various subjects we're gonna talk about tonight. They've all been notified, they get, they're all gonna get two minutes to give, tell us who they are and tell us about what they're doing. As Nina said, they have 90 seconds to answer a question, and we'll go alphabetically. So, the first question, we'll start with Marjorie, and then everybody will answer that question, and then the next one will start with Walter, and then move on down. Again, candidates, some of the questions are a little lengthy, so don't, don't be, don't be afraid to ask, to have the question repeated again when it comes to your time, if in fact you need to. So, I would like...
Hello, my name's Marjorie Morganstern, and I was born and raised in the Bay Area. And the reason I'm running for city council is I would like to serve my community. Things that are major concerns for me are...
I can hear you. Sorry.
Put it really close. Yeah, put it, put it right up to your mouth. This way.
Right over.
There you go.
Okay. Anyway, my name is Marjorie Morganstern. The reason I'm running for city council is I would like to serve my community. Things that are goals for me are to help create more housing, because I think all of Sonoma County needs more housing, especially affordable housing for teachers, our police officers, our emergency workers, or anybody else. We have a lot of unsheltered people in the county. Also, a concern of mine is that Cloverdale has the best financial wellness possible, so that we have money to, you know, pay for everything we need to keep our, all our programs running, you know, make improvements if need be. I also would like to see Cloverdale become a little bit more greener, more ecology-minded. And I also have a goal of wanting to bring, like, emergencies, medical emergency services to Cloverdale, because we really don't have that at the moment for everybody.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Walker. I'm running because this is an all-hands-on-deck moment, locally, nationally, and worldwide. We can't sit back and just watch things happen anymore. We, I've been talking to months, to people in the city about the, about running for city council, because people are saying they don't want to do it because of the political environment, because of the personal environment, and that's primary, what we need to address, is being able to communicate. The enlightenment that is the foundation of this country is about people rationally being able to come together to discuss things that they feel passionately about. And we need more reason and less passion, and I'm, I'm here to encourage that conversation.
Good evening, and thank you for taking the time to attend the Soak Cloverdale City Council Forum tonight. Thank you, Nina, thank you, Ron, I appreciate it. Let me introduce myself, my name is Brian Wheeler. My family and I moved to Cloverdale in December of 2017, after going through the Tubbs fire down in Coffee Park. I retired in 2012, after completing a 26-and-a-half-year career in the Coast Guard as the engineering chief at Coast Guard Station Golden Gate. After two tours in there, we finally realized, hey, let's stay in the Bay Area. The Bay Area became home to us versus Montana, where we, my wife and I were both born and raised. After moving to Cloverdale, I realized retired life just wasn't for me. I applied and was hired as one of the seasonal, temporary seasonal parks workers, and this is where some of you may recognize me, I was your Boulevard Trash Man. So, if I said hi to you, hi again. During that time, I met a lot of residents from Cloverdale, and kind of served as a sounding board for some citizen complaints, and, "Why aren't we doing this, and why aren't we doing that?" And I realized some of these were an easy fix, and some were not, and this is one of the reasons I decided to run, is to get involved and maybe get in some of the deeper decisions for Cloverdale. I see serving on Cloverdale City Council as a privilege, and a way to use my experience as a leader, to help the city manager, staff, field, and fix some of the issues that citizens of Cloverdale bring to our attention, or at least acknowledge them and help to move things forward. I believe that serving on city council would be a way to continue public service, and hopefully make positive change for the community of Cloverdale and its residents, which is a win-win for all of us. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Nina and the chamber for putting this forum together. I know I can always count on the chamber when I stop by to see Nina about a, about a situation. So, thank you, Nina, thank you, Ron. I can't believe that I've actually lived in Cloverdale for 26 years. The time has gone by so fast, and I feel that I've been involved with the community from day one. Before I was on the city council for a couple of years, I, I was on the Chamber Pride Committee, where Jim Nysler, Kay Nysler, a group of other people would work with business owners to improve the facades of their building. I've been on the city council now for 20 years. I consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to serve you, and hopefully, I look forward to serving you another four years. And I do have some brochures up here, just a little bit about myself, a little bit about what we've done since my tenure on the council back to 2000. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Again, listen carefully, and again, this is a two-part question, so if you need it repeated, please, please ask when it comes to your turn. You have 90 seconds. If you don't use all your time, we'll get to more questions, hopefully. Remember, we have 134. All right, question number one, again, it's a two-part question. What unique skills will you bring to the city council? What impact have you made on the community since living here?
I, the unique skills that I could bring to the city council is I have traveled the world and lived in different countries. I've had numerous careers. I've worked in the film industry, which is never easy, it's rather fast-paced, and I think living around different cultures has opened my mind to the fact that we're, we're all different, but we're all actually similar as well. And I was raised by a mother that was a humanitarian, which I think has made me be more compassionate and, like, care more about humans than maybe some people. And things that I've done in my community, I've only lived here three years, and when I first got here, I was kind of sick, because I have Lyme disease. But, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what I want to do to help my community, and one thing is to serve the community.
Hi, everything is a story, so if it goes on too long, I apologize. Yeah, right. But, when I was working at God Chalks down in Santa Rosa, I've lived here since 2016, I moved to Santa Rosa, I first came to Sonoma County in 2002, I worked for like, three years at God Chalks, and I did a stint at the, in the shoe department, and that was the best aerobic exercise I've ever done in my life, and I never hope to do it again. But, when I got there, every, there was a lot of backbiting and sale stealing and sniping going on, and I wasn't having anything to do with it. I don't want to waste the time, and I just went about my business. Kurt Anderson, in the novel End of the Century, says that, says to one of his people, "There's too much noise in your signal. There's too much emotion confusing the conversation." And I'm here to minimize the noise and increase the information. I'm sorry, what was the second part? Sorry.
What, what impact have you made since living here?
I want to thank Cloverdale. I moved here in 2016, and everybody has been so welcoming. So, thank you.
I'll read that in a second. I'm gonna ask a question of the audience, I see some people straining and looking. Do we, should we ask the candidates to stand up when they're talking, would that help you better? Okay. So, if you don't, when it's your turn to speak, if you don't mind standing up so the audience can see you. The question, Brian, again, was, what unique skills will you bring to city council? What impact have you made on the community since living here?
I think some of the unique skills that I'll bring to city council would be my leadership ability, and to know that on new council members, it's gonna be a rough ride to work with probably the city managers, and assistant city manager and city staff. It's gonna be a tough time to get a relationship built, but once you do, and you got the trust, I believe that you can move forward from that. And what I've brought to Cloverdale since moving here, I've been here five years, three and a half of those years I worked for the Park Service, I think we did a good job maintaining Cloverdale, making it look better, and I think that's what everybody wants to see.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
Well, I, the unique skills I bring, I'm not so sure that they're all that unique. I, the, the best one that I have to offer the community is common sense. You know, I mean, when the city council votes on a resolution, or is discussing an item, you know, you just need some common sense plugged in there. And I guess the other one would be my financial skills. In 2007, I was awarded the Spirit of Sonoma for the work that I've done with Safe Pick Up, which is a California government lending agency for small and minority businesses. That same year, I was awarded the Entrepreneurial Award from Governor Schwarzenegger, again, for my same work with that organization. And as far as the impacts go, I've been on the city council for 20 years, so just look around. You know, I, I didn't come up with all of these ideas, but I had the common sense to vote for them. That's why we have a senior center, that's why we have a revamped downtown Boulevard, that's why we have a fire station, we also have the Performing Arts Center, and we have the addition onto the library. So, those were some of the impacts I, I feel that I gave to the city. Like I said, I didn't come up with the ideas, but I surely had the sense to vote for them. Thank you.
Gus, thank you. Walter, Walter, do you have next? Here we go again, another two-part question. Please explain what economic development means to you. Where do the resources come from to support economic development? The second part is, what can the city or the council do about rundown businesses and longtime vacant businesses like the car wash, bank building, and the old Canton restaurant building? Stand up, stand up, Walter, please.
Oh, that's right, yes. Sorry about that. Yeah, there's issues of development and growth, development of the, of the business environment and growth in the city. And every increase in growth, we have a greater demand on water. And that's one of the major focuses that we have to focus, you know, that we have going I was at the city council meeting this month, and James Gore came and did a very, very good presentation, and he was talking about land management. But, what he, what I took away from that most is that we need collaboration between levels of government. The, the budget in Cloverdale City itself is limited, but we can accomplish much more by cooperating and collaborating at the state level, at the county level, and at the federal level. They're releasing a lot of this transportation money, and I think a charging station would be, would be a great addition. And yeah, the empty, the empty spots and the unused spaces are something that the council has to definitely address in the years coming forward. Thank you.
Yep. Make sure you stand up also, Brian. Please explain what economic, economic development means to you. Where do the resources come from to support economic development? The second part is, what can the city council do about rundown businesses and longtime vacant businesses like the car wash, bank building, the old Canton building?
I think economic development, to me, means to foster good relationships with existing businesses right now. Talk to the business owners, see what they need, what their wants and needs are to continue to make them successful in their business that's current here. By doing that, in my mind, if they've got successful businesses going on, that word travels, and then you start seeing other people saying, "Hey, Cloverdale, might be a spot, I, I want to come up and do a business," or "Look into doing a business." And I think the other thing is, city council is in economic development, be identify what's missing in this town. I've heard numerous times on Cloverdale used to have a bowling alley, or Cloverdale used to have this. I know that's a big lift, that's a huge lift, but it should be something that's in the, in the pipe, so we can look and, and people can be like, "Okay, let's start thinking about that again, and talking about that again." And then drawing more, you know, Nina does a great job, drawing more festivals, and have Cloverdale become more of a, a destination place, you know, give, go down and do a couple different things on the Boulevard, and maybe upgrade the plaza a little bit, and make it a, a spot where people are glad to come and happy to come.
Well, economic development, to me, means working closer with the chamber. You know, we currently have a very good relationship with the chamber nap, and they do an awful lot for our business community. I, I like to say that living in Cloverdale is like a double-edged sword. You know, we don't have the spillover from other cities, like if we were in Ronant Park, the spillover of, of crime and all the issues that Ronant Park and Cattati may have. And the downside to that is the fact that nobody's waking up in Santa Rosa saying, "Let's go up to Cloverdale and do some shopping." So, you know, we have to, we have to be self-sufficient on that. You know, the Canton and some of the other buildings, the city tries really hard to work with those property owners to get them to do something. Bottom line is, they're longtime property owners, they're covered under Prop 13 on their property taxes, and they could sit there empty forever, and, and their property taxes are very little. But we are working on a few things, so hopefully we'll see some change pretty soon. What was the second?
You answered it, it was just, what can the city do about the, some buildings in town?
Okay, so it's, it's just working with those property owners, and that is exactly what the Pride Committee used to do when I was on that Pride Committee, when I first moved to Cloverdale. We would go out and talk to the business owners, what can we do to help you? Well, I was gonna talk about redevelopment money and, and the fact that that's gone now.
Ready? No, it goes to Brian. Oh, no, it goes to, I'm sorry, it goes to you. Wake up, Ron.
I think what I would do to help support the economy of Cloverdale would be to actually go around, talk to the small business owners, talk to different, you know, even if there's agricultural businesses, find out what their needs are about the abandoned buildings. I talked to Nina about the one with Ivy on it, and it seems like you can definitely talk to the owners and try to get them to do something about their abandoned buildings, but I also think that if they're not gonna do anything, I don't know if we're capable of forcing them to do anything with their abandoned buildings, unfortunately.
All right, it's question number three. Start with Brian. Local businesses and residents are reporting and posting about river dwellers, park and street dwellers in Cloverdale. Some sleep and occupy recessed doorways, leave their trash behind, and some threaten citizens verbally or make them feel unsafe. There are many resources available, but it appears these people choose not to utilize them. As a community, what is our recourse?
I think on the homeless, that's, that's another heavy lift right there, there's no great answer to the homeless. You can give them a resource, resources like Host, and there's also some challenges to it, whether it be the, you know, you get Prop 47, you get all of these, and it's, it's driving the homeless community up here. I think my first recourse would be to get Host up there. Host, come up and, and talk to them, and they have more resources, whether it's Catholic charities or whatever, and give them options. Get somebody that's more trained to come in, maybe give them a little on-the-street counseling, explain things to them, and, and, and help them on their way. Ultimately, there's housing out there, but that's also, those are also heavy lifts, it's not gonna happen right away. That's what we would like to see, but I don't see it happening rapidly, not, it's not as quick as we'd like to see. So, for now, they have just as many rights to sit out there, I mean, it's not a crime to be homeless. So, these guys, we have to, we have to provide for them. If we want to come up and say, "Hey, you need to get out of here," A, do we have a place to store their stuff? Do we have housing for them? We can't just kick them out of here. Have to show a little compassion towards them, and I think gear them, or veer them towards the, towards any type of counseling and, and community resources that are out there, and maybe that's where they will get their help.
Thank you.
Well, 90 seconds, huh? That's...
And 134 questions.
But you know, what, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna refer you, I made a note here, because I quoted some of what James Gore had said at his presentation on the 28th to the city council. So, if you go to the YouTube and you go to the city council meeting for September 28th, you'll see James Gore giving a presentation, very educational. You know, like Brian had said, it's not a crime to be homeless. And homeless, to me, is a big umbrella, and underneath that umbrella is the family that's having some financial problems, and they're, with the cost of living, they're, they're losing their homes or their apartments. Then we have the mentally ill and the drug addicts, and those are the ones that present a challenge for us to help. If they don't want help, there's very little we can do. We send them for an evaluation called a 5150, and one of the gentlemen, and I wish I could call on the chief to, to make sure I'm right, but we sent him, I think it was 10 times, to be evaluated, and every time, he was released. He knows the answers to give. So, until we can get more teeth like Laura's Law, it's just nothing more than a revolving door, you're right, surely. And Laura's Law will enable the parents and relatives of individuals to have them examined for psychological problems, so.
I think if we're ever gonna help the homeless population and house the homeless population, we're all gonna have to work together to think of new ideas, because I think, I've been unsheltered before, I don't think the county of Sonoma in general is doing a good job. And I think one thing that would be helpful would be, of course, to create more permanent housing. I know a lot of addicts that, once they get permanent housing, they either stop the addiction or they slow down on the addiction. I'm not saying everybody wants to be housed, but I think all humans that do want to try housing should be, you know, at some point, offered housing, rather than being shelved in a homeless shelter. That's not doing anyone any good, and it's more expensive to shelve humans than to actually put them in permanent housing. And I also think it would be great if the city council could take, I want to work on the subcommittee for the homeless, could take more interest in the homeless, and actually talk to the homeless and find out what their needs are, you know, like on very, very hot days, which we get in Cloverdale, a cooling van going around with cold drinks so nobody, you know, gets, dies of dehydration, or whatever, would be ideal.
Thank you.
Housing and homelessness is a huge issue, it's, it's a national issue, and this is just a local manifestation of the national issue, and the question is, we have available housing, and we have homeless people. And the crisis in 2008 created a huge increase in homelessness, through, very often, not anything that anybody did wrong. But how do we match up housing, available housing with the homeless, and what are we doing someplace like this where we really don't have the availability of housing? California's in a big crunch. And no, I'm not the guy with all the answers, but I'm willing to work on finding the solutions to the problems like this, that seem...
to the problems like this that seem so intermountable because it's just not going away. And we have to figure out a way to match up housing and the homeless.
Thank you. Want to hand the microphone to Gus, please? Question number four. Do you know the current state of the financial health of the city of Cloverdale? What is it and please cite your sources? I just get the questions, folks. I just get the questions and get to read them.
One more, one more time, Ron, please. I'll, I'll, can I borrow that? Thank you. The state of the finances of the city, we're in, we're in okay shape. I mean, revenues are always a roller coaster for us, you know, and, and the biggest revenue generator, of course, is property tax. Even though we only get 23 cents on the dollar, everything else goes to the county, school district, fire, et cetera. That's our biggest source. I think this year that we're working on a $10 million general fund budget and we have about 11,000, 11 million in expenditures. So 10 million income, 11 million in expenses. Looks like a small deficit to me, but we'll have it covered by the end of the year, I'm sure. This is something that you can go on the city website and get. It's called Budget at a Glance. Suzie Holmes, our finance director, puts this together. It, it gives you our income, it gives you budget for the police department, it just spells everything out. So I, the, the city's in okay shape. We could, we could always use more money, definitely.
So could I. Thank you, Gus.
Because I'm not on the city council yet, I don't really know about the financial status, but I will take Gus's word for it. And I think just like with anybody's finances at home for the city of Cloverdale, I'm sure finances is something that we always have to keep working on to make sure that we have enough money and to improve things.
Thank you.
Again, like Marjorie, I'm not, I haven't been on the council, I haven't been involved in the budget, but I firmly believe that very often it's not about the money, it's about the political will to accomplish goals because if we have goals that people can agree on, we can find ways to finance it, just like before when I mentioned the collaborative efforts that James Gore was talking about. We can't do, we can't do it all ourselves, although I do believe that we need to focus going forward on making Cloverdale more self sustaining. We can't keep relying on 101, the land bridge, for basic things like groceries and stuff. We, we need to encourage businesses here in town, which will, you know, more, the more economic activity, the stronger the city will be.
Thank you.
I'm going to echo what these guys said. I haven't been on council, so I haven't dove into the financials on it. I do look forward to learning it. The only thing that I've got is the Budget at a Glance. I would have to have somebody sit down and actually explain some of this stuff to me to give you an honest answer on this. I do know that the budget is pretty, that's, that's driving Cloverdale, it's driving the projects that everybody wants to see, all the, so, yeah, this is something I'm, I'm really interested in learning more about.
Everybody's doing great with time, this is fabulous. We might get to 131 questions. All right, question number five. Social media. Take an inward look, please, and let us know what concerns could be raised by the community as a result of your past or present social media postings, either originated by you or in response to others post, others postings.
I think everybody in this community probably has their own opinions and I think everybody should be able to be free to express their own opinions on social media. A lot of people don't like other people's opinions because everybody has an opinion and so they could try to invalidate it any way they want, but if you have an opinion, you should be able to express it freely on social media.
Thank you.
I've been on Facebook since the beginning of time. I actually have a university ID that I sign in on my Facebook account with. I've been there so long. My, the conventional phase of my campaign was derailed right off the bat by trolls on Facebook. I lost support, I lost a campaign manager over it. So this is the unconventional phase of an unconventional campaign. But it's an important tool for communication, but just like the Constitution, we have rights, but we also have duties, responsibilities, and privileges that go along with it. And part of the responsibility is responsible communication, talking, addressing the solutions, not the problems.
Thank you.
I personally don't have social media. I was on Facebook for, oh, I don't know, probably six months and realized it was, to me, in my opinion, was a huge waste of time. So the only social media I do now, I guess, is Nextdoor. I have sold a treadmill and a couple of things on there, that's about all I got. So I'm sorry if, if people are getting bashed on there, but it's all I got.
Well, Brian, I can almost say ditto. When, when Facebook came, first came out, I had my Facebook page, I guess, and, you know, it was fun posting to my cousins and, and my sister who lived back east and we could share pictures and, you know, read about what the family was doing. But quickly it became, I don't want to say an addiction, but I was drawn to it. It was like, what, what's new on Facebook? And then it got to the point where some of the articles I would, I would read or some of the posts about the city, it was completely wrong and it was just nothing more than a rumor. So finally I just stopped altogether. So I don't really have a Facebook now. My wife does go on it and she'll let me know if there's anything of interest that I should read, but it, it's too frustrating and aggravating for me to, to do it, so I don't.
Thank you, Gus.
The Timekeeper is not very busy tonight.
I'm going to say, this, as I said just before, this is amazing. I mean, usually you've got to get a cane and start pulling them off and call the police department in and, you know, an hour and a half later. I could make up some harder questions if you want.
Two-part questions, which can be asked for my visit to one part question?
I don't think there's any, I'll have to look here, but I don't think there's any more two-part questions. All right. Walker. Regarding city streets, water and sewer plants, what resources can be tapped to help fund costly upgrades for necessary improvements?
First of all, I'd like to thank Pete Buttigieg for the infrastructure bill. There is some of that money that is coming to us, which is great. But again, if you look around town, okay, the, the later developments have really good streets. Areas back like over here, they're all rundown and neglected and it's a matter of where we put the money. We have, of course, we have to get it first, but I don't have, I don't have a wallet full of money to say, this is what we're going to use. But I'm, I'm willing to work hard to find the money and to make sure that it comes to Cloverdale to help repair our infrastructure, make the water, make us safe from fire, provide for water usage, things like that.
Thank you.
One more time, Ron. Good question.
Yes, sir. Regarding city streets, water and sewer plants, what resources can be tapped to help fund costly upgrades for necessary improvements?
The resources that would be tapped would be sitting right back there in the back of the room. I'd be tapping into the city manager, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Thompson. I don't have the expertise in going out and finding grants and stuff like that, that's where they come in. So when the relationship is built between them, it becomes a working relationship and then we all try to find the money and we task each other or work with each other and say, hey, this is, you know, it's, then we sit there and talk and say, hey, you guys found this out, we found this out. However that goes down, we have to have an intelligent conversation and come up and say, hey, I've found some money, we can use it for this item on, on any infrastructure, any streets or anything like that, and work together as a team to get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, once again, everything revolves around money and it, it's obvious we don't have it or else we would be doing the streets that are in disrepair. We'd be doing our capital improvement projects for the water treatment plant. So where do we get the money, grants? You know, we, we just received a $3 million grant from the citywide drought relief and water system upgrades. And that money is going to be used to replace all of the meters in town, redo as much as we can at the water treatment plant. But we're also in the process of entering into a contract with PG&E to replace, I believe it's a $7 million contract, where they're going to come in and they're going to replace the, the air conditioning, heating units on, at the senior center, at the library, at city hall. They're going to be doing other upgrades, upgrades throughout the city and they're repaid with the, with the money that we save. And over a period of time, once it's paid off, we'll be improving our cash flow to the tune of, I believe it's $370, $375,000 a year. I might have that wrong, don't hold me to that.
Thanks, Gus.
Ask the question one more time.
Yes, ma'am. Regarding city streets, water and sewer plants, what resources can be tapped to help fund costly upgrades for necessary improvements?
I think the best way to go about getting the money would be going to city hall and talking to people like us and tapping into federal grants and state grants that might be available. And that would be how we would get more money because Cloverdale has limited income.
All right. Brian, you get to start with question number six.
This one, huh? You're next.
Question number seven, I'm sorry. Do you know what current resources the city uses to communicate with its constituents? How might you, as a council member, go about making communication more effective?
I do not know what the city uses to communicate with the constituents. Me personally, I, I get on the road and, or go down the street and I talk to people, that's my communication. I don't, I don't know what they do use, so.
Okay. Gus?
I should know this, right? Well, you know, it depends on what you're talking about. You know, we use Cloverdale Connect, we've just started using that over the last six months. I believe the city has a full page and our city manager and senior staff, they do a little blurb and an update. In front of city hall, of course, we have our bulletin board that's maintained by the chamber, but we also have the city manager's weekly report. And again, you can find that on the webpage. David spends a lot of time on that report, there's a little bit of everything. If you were to open it up from last week, you'd see pictures of the new pickleball court that's down at Furbel Park. You'll read about Hector and, and what his parks and recs crew are doing to maintain the, the parks. If it's an electric bill item or something to do with utilities, most of the time we put it on the back of the utility bill or we do an insert. But since we lost the week, they were reveling, we've lost a lot. And you can always call city hall, you can always call one of your council members. I'm sure you see most of us, I know I talk to a lot of people at Raze about what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus.
The city of Cloverdale has a very good website where they constantly update it with things that are going on, but also if people are interested in what's going on in Cloverdale, they can attend city council meetings or watch the Zooms from the city council meetings. So I just wanted to add that to what Gus said.
Thank you.
Communication is an essential aspect of transparency in government. We do have cloverdale.net, which is the Chamber of Commerce, and we have the, oh, that's the city website, sorry about that. Dear, what was I going to say? Well, that worked. Repeat the question.
Yes, sir. Do you know what current resources the city uses to communicate with constituents? How might you, as a council member, go about making communication more effective?
Attendance at the city council meeting is terrible, everybody needs to show up. But that aside, my question is, when, when this kerfuffle that derailed my account happened on Facebook, my response was, because it was, it was about being gay, and I'm like, okay, if you're ready to have a conversation about sex, sexuality and gender, I'm ready. If you want to have a conversation about responsibility and rights, I'm ready. What would anybody think about instituting supplemental town hall meetings to discuss stuff rather than just relying on the city council?
Thank you. As an FYI to everyone that's in here, the chamber does produce a lot of information on behalf of the city, so you can go to the chamber website to gather a lot of information. They, we send out, or Nina and her team send out a newsletter at least once a week with events and various things that are going, going on in the city. The city also has a newsletter that comes out every Friday, you can sign up for that on their website. That's put together by the staff there and there's information from the drought to upcoming issues, to the parks, what's going on there, what's going on in city hall. And also there's a YouTube channel that you can watch all the city council meetings. This meeting will be on the YouTube channel. So there's a lot of resources for anyone in this room or anyone in the city to get information, what's going on with, with the city as, as needed, so. Of course you can.
We have recently expanded our membership so that if you are a person who is not affiliated with the organization or a business, you can be a friend and chamber member and you'll get our newsletters and we're here for you. So trying to be as encompassing as possible with two part-time people. We have a wonderful board.
Like Gus said, it's all about money, so please send us some money, we need it. Thank you, Nina. Gus? This is a long one here, so, you ready? I have these things in front of me and I still forget what the questions are. Please explain how you, how you will represent the value and goals of Cloverdale. Two-part question, sorry. One, when these goals may be different within the community, such as a firework debate and division. Two, when the values and goals may be different from your own. Three, when the values and goals may be different from other council members. Please be specific and give examples of when you have managed this. I just read the questions, folks, I just read the questions. Somebody out here put this question together. Nobody, I didn't write this, Nina didn't write it, nobody else in the chamber staff wrote it. These came in from, and/or written here. I have all the questions in front of me. So, I mean, there's only one we didn't select because it's a, it's a repeat of another question, but all these are, have come in, we're going to be able to read all 131. No, we should No, we should get through all the questions, seriously. Uh, and please give examples of when you have managed this in your personal life and professional life.
I don't know.
They get three hours to answer, each, we want to get three hours to answer this question.
I don't know that I can do that, but I'm going to back up for one second about communications because I forgot to mention, if you go to the city's webpage and you look under agendas, um, you'll see, um, an actual link when the minutes have been approved and you can click on every subcommittee meeting and, and view it on YouTube. So the website, the website, the website is really valuable. As far as goals go, you know, uh, when it comes to personal goals, um, and if they, um, i- i- if they're in conflict with my fellow council members or my constituents, you know, I'm, I'm voted in office to, uh, represent the community and they tell me who I'm going to work with and it's up to me to work with them. I, I, I may not like Brian, but, um, if, if he's elected on the council, my job is to work with him. You know, you told me to do that. You, you voted for him. Um, as far as my personal goals, um, y- you know, I listen to the constituents. I, I, I listen to the people, you know? Um, you know, a couple of my goals have been, uh, have come to fruition. Uh, it's only taken 10 years to have the restrooms put in the, uh, in the plaza. That's been a goal of mine for, for quite a while. So, um, yeah, it's, it's just about working with the community and working with my fellow council members to get it done. There's nothing personal in this.
Thank you, Gus.
I think the answer would be to try to figure out what would be the best thing for the city of Cloverdale rather than, you know, supposing you love fireworks, but maybe that, there's a fire hazard, so you have to think of what would be the best thing for the city of Cloverdale. Use your common sense and carry it through that way.
Thank you.
One of the things that I wanted to do in the campaign was do a presentation, uh, called The Good, The Better and The Best, about value fulfill-, value fulfillment. And it's like I already said, it's about collaboration. And, um, people are, people are gonna just, oh, didn't I say this already about the enlightenment being a way for rational people to come, come together to discuss things that they feel passionately about? We can overcome the differences by talking openly and truthfully to each other about what's really going on and setting aside ideology and political preferences. That's, that's my idea, anyway.
Thank you.
My main goal, uh, for city council is to just build relationships. Get in there and, and get to know the people. Uh, we may not hang out, we may, may not be the best of friends, but there is a mutual respect when you get on city council, so you can work and you can get positive results, um, through all the members. As far as the fireworks thing, I've, I'd have to dive into that one right there. Uh, it's pretty controversial. I have to hear both sides of it again. I know it brings in a lot of money for the Lions Club, so I'm not going to shoot down the Lions Club and I know, uh, I'm a dog owner. I know how that affects, and I know also, I went through a fire down in the Tubbs Fire and I know the importance of that. So both of those weigh pretty heavily, or are pretty even actually with me, so, um, that would be at one of the goals is to, is to actually gain trust and work with all of the other council members.
Thank you. Marjorie, you get to start this one off? It sounds long, but it's not, honestly. It's very, this is a very simple one to answer. The city has several subcommittees. It's where much of the work is done prior to coming before the city council. They are finance and administration and police, that's one. Planning and sustainability, that's two. Public works and facilities, that's three. Joint city, uh, unified school district. Homelessness Community Advisory Group. As a city council member, you would, would you serve on two of these and what interest do you have and which committees would you like to be on?
I come from a family of educators, um, so the school subcommittee would interest me and I've been unsheltered before and I have compassion for homeless people and especially ones that, you know, there's some seniors out there that are sick and don't have drug addiction problems that just got priced out of, you know, different areas. So I would definitely want to work on the school subcommittee and the homeless subcommittee.
Great.
Uh, just before COVID, I was, I was signing up for my very first subcommittee, which was going to be the climate action subcommittee, and then COVID happened and nothing did. Um, I would like to see that reactivated, but I'd be more, most interested, I think, in the city-school, um, coordination and, um, public works.
Thank you.
I think other committees, the number one I'd like to, uh, serve on would be the homeless advisory group or committee, um, working with the city for the parks department. I did run into those, are unhoused in the plaza quite often and, uh, there was some exchanges there. I would like to kind of step back from the exchanges and kind of help the guys out. Also, I believe it would be between the public works and the school, because I have never had any interaction with the school, school board, anything like that, and I know that's a hot item right now and I think it would be very interesting to get in on that.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, I think over the 20 years I've been on all of those and, um, I have to say that, um, the way the process works is each council member picks, um, the ones that he'd like to be on, one, two, three, four. And then the city manager and assistant city manager, they tie everything together and if Gus is the only one that wants to be on the city school subcommittee, then he gets it. Personally, I like to look at, um, the experience that we have on the dais. You know, we have, uh, Chief Paula, who was our police chief here in Cloverdale. He's got extensive law enforcement. He belongs on the, uh, uh, police subcommittee, I think. Uh, you look at Todd Lance, our mayor, um, a former, um, a police officer for the sheriff's department, uh, he does a great job with the homeless, you know? Um, Todd is also, uh, a, a previous school board member. It's only natural that he belongs on the school board. So, um, you know, I'll, I'll take any of them, but I do like the finance and I do like the public works, so.
Thank you, Gus. Gus? It's gonna be you, yes. No, no, no. No, it's gonna be Walter. I'm, I'm thinking out loud here. I have all these cards. All right, here we go. It's an easy one. What can the city council do to support long-term water availability for the city of Cloverdale?
Oh, boy. Again, what are we gonna do as a community, as a county and as a state? I'm, I'm not, I'm not the one with the answers. I have no actual concrete answer for that question, but that's, like I said before, on the housing issue and the, and the growth and development. Water is the essential element to all of these deci- decisions. But how they're gonna be made is what we're gonna have to figure out going forward. And that's why I want to be part of the team to help contribute ideas to find solutions.
I think moving forward with water, um, I'm gonna try to decipher the notes Darren Hernandez gave me, so, and he's a pretty smart guy, but, um, like, the new developments like Baumgartner Ranch and all that, the way it's explained to me is, is the impact fees from that pay for a new well, which will draw more water. We take the water from an underground source, so even when the riverbed is dry, we're getting water from underneath that. Phase one on the Baumgartner doesn't pay it, uh, for the new well, but as soon as they move into phase two, then I believe that's where we can start getting some, some monies for that. You know, the water treatment plant, everything, a lot, there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be done and, and with water, I, it's, we have enough. That's, that's what I want to say to Cloverdale, we have enough water, but, and we are also doing a great job on our, our daily use and all that is, it has come down since they, uh, where are we at here? Let me, let me look at my notes here. From what I understand, they do the, every 10 years is checked for per capita gallons per, or max consumption. In 2003, it was 2,089, um, 2 million, 2.89 million gallons. 2013, it was 2.3 and to date right now, I want to say we're under 2 million. So what people are doing for water, they're conserving it, everything, whether they're partnering with Bayern or for landscapes or anything like that, people are really doing a good job on that.
Ron, could you just repeat that one more time because, you know, water is such a broad topic. I kind of want to stay on point of what the question is.
Yes, sir. What can the city council do to support long-term water availability for the city of Cloverdale?
Well, I think there's a number of things we can do. The first one is, um, and Brian had mentioned it, was, um, the, the new well that we're hoping to be able to put in, and that well, we're hoping can go on the east side of the river as opposed to the west side. The river meanders quite a bit and, um, over the last 10, 15 years, it, it's now over on the eastern bank. So if we could drop our well down there on the east side, uh, the pipe to run the water from the, from the well on the east side to the, to the treatment plant is already under the, uh, First Street Bridge. Um, they thawed ahead and they had that bridge, that pipe strapped up there. We also have to get off the river, um, and start looking for other sites to drop wells. Um, we should take advantage and, and, and I think, uh, we are to some extent, to some of our employees, uh, like, um, Hector, who's lived here ever since he's been a kid. He knows where all the, all the wet spots are and, um, so he knows there's water under there. The other thing we're hopefully going to be doing is, um, dropping wells for irrigation in our parks, uh, over at Second Street and Ferber, just put a well there and that's strictly for irrigation. Um, but we just have to, uh, be aggressive, um, and, and try and think ahead. We have, we have, Nina, are you putting that up? We have, um,
Marjorie?
I just want to add, one thing we could do is, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but there is reclaimed water, um, downtown and I know the history museum was out of water for watering plants and if somehow the downtown area could tap into the reclaimed water, that would be a source of, you know, watering landscapes, so, you know? And I also think we should, the city council should keep coming up with campaigns to remind people how to save water. I mean, even if we have a really wet year, it doesn't mean the next year will be wet again, and I think we constantly have to remind people or they forget that we're trying to conserve water.
Thank you. Brian, you're up. Your next question.
Oh, am I? Okay. Got you, man.
What, in your opinion, is the most critical challenge or current goal facing Cloverdale in the, in the next year? And what skills, knowledge and/or experience do you bring to the city council to achieve the city's goals?
To me, the number one goal is to, uh, to give the boulevard and maybe the plaza a little bit of an upgrade. I believe that we are outgrowing the plaza. I went down there for the Harvest Festival. It seems like it's getting smaller and more, or more people are coming. The plaza's not getting smaller, but more people are coming and I believe that that would be a big, uh, boost to Cloverdale. Also, uh, going up and down the boulevard and really maintaining that boulevard. If you, I hate to say it, but if you look at other towns and say the Hillsburg area and the plaza, it's just vibrant, there's stuff happening non-stop. You know what I mean? I'd like to see Cloverdale get to that point, get Cloverdale to be a destination where people come up and like, hey, like Gus is saying, hey, let's go up to Cloverdale and maybe go shopping or maybe do things like that. Spend time on the plaza because the plaza's been cleaned up, the boulevard looks nice, things like that. That's one of my goals. And as council, I mean, that's one thing I would push.
Thank you. Gus?
One more time, Ron, please.
What, in your opinion, is the most critical challenge or current goal facing Cloverdale in the next year? And, and what skills and knowledge and/or experience do you have to bring to the city council to achieve those goals?
Well, I, I don't know that these goal, there's a lot of goals, um, uh, and challenges that are out there. One of the things I'd like to do is, um, push forward on the new police department. Uh, we've been promising our boys for quite a while now that they were going to get a new station. The one that they have over there is in disrepair. It, it, it's a disgrace to have them working there. New police station, it costs money, you know? Uh, we have plans drawn up and I, I think the price tag for the new police station came in at 17 million. Well, we don't have 17 million to spend on a police station. Um, we're more in the, in the, in the seven, eight or maybe even 10 million if we can get something for that. So, so that would be a goal, finding those resources and finding that money. We've got the location. And, and then I guess the other thing is, um, is focus on our, um, on our, um, ability to capture more water, uh, out of the river. Um, more storage tanks, um, and again, that's an infrastructure issue. So th- those would be the two that I would like to concentrate on and, uh, I, I guess my experience, uh, would be working with those for the, for the past years.
Thank you, Gus.
I would like to bring urgent care to Cloverdale, urgent care that anyone could go to as needed, because right now we don't have urgent care and I think it's imperative, um, that we do, because if somebody is not hurt so bad that they need an ambulance, but they're home alone or whatever, they somehow need to go to urgent care in other cities that are not that close by. And I think it's imperative, like if you're a mother home alone, your husband's got the vehicle, he's far away working and you've got a young child and they hurt themselves, it's imperative that you can take them somewhere and get urgent care for them immediately. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Just this morning, I was talking to Jade and the director of the, uh, healthcare center and they've now got the money for the new urgent care center that they're gonna start building. So there is movement in that direction and I'm really glad to, that that's coming. Uh, all right, my challenge, first of all, is community engagement. We need to get people in, uh, more than just coming out for Friday Night Live. We need to get people involved and active in the city, getting to know each other. New Year's Eve this year, uh, last year, first time after COVID, I went, I was going to a friend's house, uh, for New Year's Eve. I was in the right neighborhood on the right street, but around the corner, and I didn't know this, the street was dark. There were no street lights, there were no street numbers. So I went up to this house to look to see if it was her house and the, the husband and wife come out and say, "I'm gonna shoot you in the face if you ever come by again." I was like, "Wait, stop." We need, we need to be, we need to get to know each other as a community, we need to get active together. When I complained to, when I mentioned on Facebook, here we go, that the, uh, performing arts center is severely underused, um, the board got on my back saying, you know, this is not city council business, but it's one way that we can get the community involved.
Thank you, sir. Gus, we're gonna start with you. For the next question. This is a short one. I'm making sure the chief is okay. All right. Are you in support of increasing funding for police and community safety?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just read the questions, folks. I just read, just read the questions.
Definitely.
I just want to say this, the whole issue of, quote, defunding- I just want to say this, the whole issue of quote "defunding the police" was about demilitarizing the police. They don't need Hummers, they don't need all this high-end military gear. That's what I'm opposed to. Community serving, you know, the police, serving the community, that's essential. But more money, yes, if it's used well.
Thank you.
Absolutely on the police. I'm all about giving them what they need. I know, and I'm going to revert back to my military background, these guys need training, they need the right tools to do training and that all costs money. So, it's up to me, absolutely, I'd bump their budget up and, and give them what they need because that benefits all of us. When we have a good police force, we have public safety.
Thank you, Brian. Now, I know, I know time flies when you're having fun. We've been through 133 questions already because I have the last question in my hand. Hard to believe, huh? Actually, we could probably say that a couple of those two-part, two-part questions could actually have been two questions. So, we've been through 136 questions already. This is the last question and after the question, after everybody goes through, then each candidate gets 60 seconds, gets one minute to do their closing discussion and you are free to move about the cabin, talk, talk with any of the candidates you want, ask them questions specifically, but this is the last one. Back to social media. Some social media sites focused on Cloverdale have a lack of civility when addressing issues of the city council and school board. What will you do to attempt to restore civility?
I think it's up to each indivi- individual to behave how, you know, they want to behave on social media. I don't think the city council's job is to police people on social media. That's beyond the realm of city council.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Some social media sites focused on Cloverdale have a lack of civility when addressing issues of the city council and school board. What will you do in an attempt to restore civility?
All right, first thing I did was when I heard from Kathleen Coats at the PD, first thing I said to her was that the Press Democrat has a bad reputation for publishing stories that are only negative about Cloverdale. Let's not make this one of those. And she did, she did really well with the presentation of the candidate, so I was pleased, but we need more of that. We need communication with the media. And we need to bring light to the darkness. You can't fight darkness with darkness, you can only fight darkness by bringing the light. And rights and responsibilities means that we have the right to have an opinion, but we have the responsibility to be good community members and communicate in a positive way. We should be working towards solutions, not harping on the problems.
Thank you.
One more time, Ron? Repeat it?
Yes, sir. Some social media sites focused on Cloverdale have a lack of civility when addressing issues of the city council and school board. What will you do in an attempt to restore civility?
Well, once again, I don't have social media, but I've seen it flying around, I've heard it flying around on things that are going on on social media and I guess what I would do is, is I would offer them to come down and talk in person and set the keyboard aside and if you want, if you've got issues with somebody, come down and schedule a meeting with them, talk to them. You may work it out right then and there and kibosh all of the rumors that get flying around on social media, which in my experience and seeing that stuff is, that's all it is. Starts out as a good conversation, turns into rumors and goes south quickly from there.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, you know, we have Jenny sitting in the back there, the new school board member, and I, I think what the, I think what the community is looking for is transparency. You know, they want to be part of the process, part of the decision-making and I think the city always tries to be transparent and get input. Lord knows we do enough meetings and I think with, with the mayor, former school board member continuing to work on the school board, we might be able to fix it, but I'm not so sure it's broken between the city and the school board. I think we have a great working relationship with them, so. And that was the question, was it not?
No.
Well, that was my, that was my answer.
And you're sticking to it, right? All right, well, that concludes all the questions from the community that we gathered, all 136 and a half of them. The next, each one of you gets one minute to state your, your closing argument, why you want to be city council, what you're going to bring, what you want to do, and then we'll wrap it up.
I think what I want to bring to city council is just a fresh view and, let's see, and some changes, like I said, you know, if we could speed up having urgent care in Cloverdale, that would be great. I also would like to put a lot of work into the subcommittees. I think the homeless problem or the homeless issue is very important and we need to deal with it humanely and, you know, during fire season, it's a real concern along the river and it's something that concerns all of us and it's something that I'd really like to work on.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to apologize. Every single answer that I gave, as soon as I sat down, I thought of the better half of the answer, so each one of my answers was a little half of what I wanted to say, but I tried. I'm here to serve the community. I'm not doing this for my own ego gratification. My ego doesn't need this gratification, but the community and Cloverdale need the engagement, they need the activity and so I'm willing to put myself up for four years of meetings and reports and conferences and all that stuff. I'm ready and willing to serve. I'd like to leave it to the voters to decide whether they think I'm worthy or not.
I think the city council, to me, is, is going to be a learning curve. I don't have all the answers, but I think my, one of my strengths is I do have a lot of leadership qualities and also I'm looking forward to working with city staff and learning this and like I said, gaining trust in them, in the decision-making process and then moving forward to bigger goals. But in turn, with that being said, I'd like to work on some of the smaller stuff, some of the quicker stuff that we could do. Like I said, maybe, maybe upgrading the plaza a little bit prior to Friday Night Live, maybe, maybe upgrading the boulevard a little bit by having, I know that the city has the blue recycle cans that we've had for, I don't know, eight or 10 years and I've had questions on why are those not out and having the option to recycle. So, little things like that, I think, can be taken care of in the here and now. Those are some of my goals and, and like I said, working with, working as a team with city council.
Thank you. Well, I've been on the city council for 20 years and I'd like to say I, I've done that, I have a reputation, I think, for honesty and integrity and that's what's really needed to be on the council. I understand how the city finances work and other than that, I just appreciate your vote on my birthday, November the 8th. So, that would be a good birthday present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Gus.
Again, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank all the candidates for being here this evening. Thank Nina for putting this together and all of you that asked questions, had information. Thanks to Nick back there for videotaping and then our ubiquitous Bob Cox, who I actually think he's, there's like five of them, because everywhere you go, you happen to see him doing something. But Bob, Bob and the group put all this together with the speakers in that for us, so Bob, thank you. Thank you everyone for being here. And I've just been given the stop sign. Have a good evening.